Barbara Bynum.
Present.
Doug Glassbell.
Present.
Roy Anderson.
Present.
Dave Bowman.
Present.
Dave Frank.
Present.
Zach Goldroyd.
Present.
All city councilors and our youth council representative are present. Thank you very much. The first thing on our agenda tonight is a call for public comment. We do this at the beginning of all of our meetings. And this is an opportunity for the public to make any comments to city council about anything that is not on our regularly scheduled agenda. So if you're, if you want to make a comment about something and it's part of our agenda tonight, I ask that you hold your comments until we get to that agenda item. And that in the meantime, I will look at our list of attendees who are joining us via Zoom. And thank you all for joining us. And I'm looking to see if anyone is raising their hand. If you'd like to make public comment, there is a raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen. And if you click on that, that indicates that we have someone. I think I see a hand, but I believe that's one of our liquor license applications, applicants. And so I'm gonna hold off and we'll get to him when we review that liquor license. I do not see any other folks who wish to make public comment. So I can skip all of the legal verbiage that we would read if there were folks wishing to make comment. Next on our agenda tonight is approval of minutes. And this is council consideration of the minutes from the March 11, 2021 special city council meeting, the March 15, 2021 special city council meeting, and the March 16, 2021 regular city council meeting.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 11, 2021 special city council meeting, the March 15, 2021 special council meeting, and the March 16, 2021 regular city council meeting as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. So I ask you to go ahead and record your vote on our electronic system. And motion passes unanimously. Minutes are approved. Next on our agenda tonight, item six, is my opportunity to acknowledge our departing city councillor, Roy Anderson. And Roy, if you would join me, we're gonna, we're gonna stand over there and do this the formal way since we're here in council together. Okay, perfect. Thank you. I am so honored to be able to thank you for your years of service to the city of Montrose. We are sad to see you leave. Roy joined the city first as a planning commissioner in 2015 after relocating with his wife to Montrose to enjoy the climate, the outdoor activities. And you say your favorite thing about Montrose though is the friendly people. And I know he's very much enjoyed his time here. He loved planning commission so much that he ran and won his election to join city council in 2016. And then again, won reelection last year. And it was with a very sad heart that Roy and his wife made a decision to relocate to a lower elevation. And he was really sad to let those of us on council know that he would be leaving Montrose. So it's with heavy heart that we wish you a do. I know you are sad as well. But I want to thank you so much for your contributions to the city of Montrose because we are lucky to have had you while we did. Some of the things that Roy has particularly instrumental and passionate about, broadband in our community. That's an issue that Roy has been championing since the beginning. And so for all of you watching right now, perhaps on fiber, you have this man to thank because he really was always passionate and persistent about bringing that to our community. He is also really interested in the future of electric vehicles and transportation issues. And always was very passionate about following up on those issues as well and making sure that Montrose knew what was going on and how we as a city could be involved in those decisions. And then I also know you care tremendously about housing in our community. And a lot of the work that we're currently making right now in housing is because you've been part of this council for the last five years. And so I really want to thank you for those contributions. We have this plaque that talks about how you were mayor in 2017 and how you were the youth city council liaison and how you were on the planning commission. And I think it's a beautiful plaque. I'm gonna set down my paper. And I'm gonna formally hand this to you. And I know there's not a lot of people in the room here with us tonight, but I think we all should give Roy a big round of applause.
I just want to say thank you so much for all the support the community has given me and especially staff. And I'd also like to say, Barbara, you've been an amazing mayor in very difficult times. And I don't think I could have done the job you did. You did a super fantastic job, as well as our staff. And I just want to say the people have been wonderful to me. And, and we're making lots of strides in Montrose, lots of progress. And I'm kinda sad to leave right at this exciting time when so many things are happening. But I'm very proud of all the things that we've accomplished and that still lie ahead to be accomplished. And lastly, I want to say what a pleasure and privilege it has been to work with the staff at the city government. People of Montrose are really lucky to have the professional people who work every day for your benefit governing our city. It's an incredible staff and I'm gonna miss you all very much. So thank you for this honor. It's really been a privilege.
Absolutely, you may make comments.
Well, I've had, I guess, the opportunity to work with Roy ever since he became a member of the planning commission and in the council. And I can certainly speak to how sincere he's been in every application that he's worked on. And I think that's been just outstanding. Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda tonight is appointment of mayor and mayor pro temp for the next 12 months. And we will do paper nomination forms that the city clerk is gonna give to each us. We'll first nominate one of our fellow councilors to serve as mayor for the next 12 months. And we'll fill these out and we'll give them back to the city clerk. Counting five paper ballots is a lot quicker than counting municipal election, county election, or national elections. We still do verify with two people.
Mayor Bynum, we have a unanimous selection for Doug Glassbell.
Great. So we have a unanimous nomination for Mr. Glassbell to serve as the next mayor. I would entertain a motion to that effect.
Madam Mayor, I would move that Doug Glassbell be named as the mayor for the 2021-2022 council year. And Doug, congratulations.
Yeah, and I'd like to have the opportunity to second that.
Thank you. We've got a motion and a second. Would everyone please, are we recording votes electronically on this? Thank you. Record your vote. Doug's has to vote. Great. And we have a unanimous vote for Mr. Doug Glassbell to serve as the next mayor of the city of Montrose. Congratulations. And then next, we elect from amongst our city council here, mayor pro temp. And so our city clerk will distribute ballots for that.
Mayor Bynum, we have a unanimous selection for Dave Frank.
Thank you very much. Could I please entertain a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Thank you. So we have a motion to elect Dave Frank as mayor pro temp. Would everyone please vote electronically? Oh, did we not have a second? Sorry. You'd think, you'd think I wouldn't screw up my very last vote as mayor.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a second on that vote that we just did?
Now we have a second and now our vote counts. Thank you. Oh, we vote one more time. Okay, we're voting one more time. Just when you think you know what you're doing, right? Oh, my goodness. So with an official motion and a second, we have a unanimous vote to select Dave Frank as the next mayor pro tempore for the city of Montrose. Congratulations, Mr. Frank. And Mr. Glassbell and I are gonna take a second to change sheets. To help you out as needed. No, I already switched waters. We're good. You've got this.
The next item is an opportunity for me to talk a little bit about Barbara. And I was amazed when I did a little research. Barbara has been helping this community ever since she got here. And I made a little list of things. Housekeeping wasn't one of them. She's on the state land board, has been on it. She's been vice president of the school district, city council and mayor. She was a major force in getting the recreation district approved. And she's also on the Colorado Municipal League Board. So she has spent most of her time since living here doing a great job for this community and really moving it along. And I think that's just fantastic. She's done a great job. This last year has been a roller coaster. And she never fell off the tram, not one time. Makes it easier for me to start. Appreciate that. Anyway, I'd just like to thank Barbara for what she's done over the years for the community. And I think she's done a fantastic job of dealing with the COVID situation. So let's give her a great round of applause.
Thanks. It has been an interesting year, but it has been my honor to serve as the city's mayor. And I look forward to continuing to serve the city on city council. And I know we're in good hands.
Mayor, Mayor Glassbell? We have a plaque for Ms. Bynum.
April 2020 to April 2021. Fantastic job.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Did you get, are you good?
Thank you. Certainly. Thank you. Let me start over. That's one. Our next item number nine is the Colorado Yurt Business Expansion Project into the Colorado Outdoor Urban Renewal Authority project area. Council is going to be considering a business expansion incentive and development agreement between the city of Montrose, the Secret Creek Group LLC, DBA Colorado Yurt Company, to include permit fee, utility abatement, office of business and tourism, Maiden Montrose marketing assistance, and the horizontal site and infrastructure improvements. And city manager Bill Bell will give us some information on it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have John Gibson with us tonight virtually. And he's prepared a PowerPoint just to give a overall summary of his project. We've talked about it at work session and now we're bringing it forward for consideration tonight. And then depending on tonight and how we handle the approval or not, we have scheduled a Mura board meeting, a URA board meeting for tomorrow morning to take that to the next level if that's necessary. It's been outlined in the packet with our normal one sheet information page that gives a good summary and a visual of what the project might look like. And so first, I guess I'll just turn it over to John Gibson and he can give a summary of the project. And then if, if you all would like me to cover the financing side of it and some of the dollar details after that, feel free to call on me.
All right. Good evening, everybody. My name is John Gibson and I'm the CEO and owner of Colorado Yurt Company. Appreciate the opportunity to present tonight to Mayor Glassbell and the rest of the city council. And we do have a few other folks on the call here. Of course, my wife and business partner Kelly Gibson is on the call, albeit not as a speaker tonight. Chris Alcorn with Alcorn Construction is available for you to have any questions of him. Kevin Johnson, I think, is joining us with Timberline Bank. And I'm on the phone with him. He is here. And then a significant number of our employees at Colorado Yurt Company excited to see where we're headed with the project. So with that, I will go ahead and share this presentation. And if I can get a hands up as to, once I get up here, that it's actually showing. Let's see if we can get that to her.
Can you hold on one sec? We're having a little bit of a technical issue here.
All of our monitors have turned off.
Thank you, sir. We're good to go.
Okay, great. We'll go ahead and get started. Just a little bit of note, we're obviously Colorado Yurt Company looking at our project. We're Colorado Outdoors in partnership with Timberline Bank. And you'll already start to see the Maiden Montrose piece of this. A little bit of an example of the yurts, teepees and tents that we make as far, part of our business. Couple of things to share. You know, the Colorado Yurt Company was founded in 1976 by Dan and Emma Keiger and has been in the Montrose business community since 1994. Kelly and I purchased the business back in January of 2020, just over about 15 months ago. We were attracted to the business after looking at about 200 other businesses to buy after I retired from my prior industry. The legacy brand, company reputation, the team members, the product lines, potential for growth and diversification, along with the Montrose business climate and the fact that it was part of the Western Colorado lifestyle were the big things that made us make a decision to move ourselves and everything we have over here to the Western slope. From 2016 to 19, in my evaluation of the business, it was pretty obvious that the company growth had stalled a bit and the culture was struggling. Coming to 2020, as we built the business and bought the business, despite COVID, our sales were actually up 45%. And so far, this first quarter of 2021, we're 56% above our targeted sales numbers. All the indications show that the industry that we participate in, the outdoors industry, has got at least a 10-year run for some pretty amazing growth. As we call Colorado Yurt 2.0, we have a transformative culture right now. Innovation, change, investment, improvements. And we've gone through an exercise with our team, as many businesses do, to define our values. And I would encourage you to take a look at how we're able to use pitches. We pitch teepees, shirts and tents. You know, the things that are core to our business are people, the integrity above all else, Timberline standards. I say we start where others look up to. We have very creative solutions and we've got a hungry group of people that are very passionate, driven and entrepreneurial. If we look at the creative solutions, I'll pull that one out for a little bit and look back to what happened to us in 2020, especially after just getting the business, buying the business and having COVID hit. Mayor Bynum and I share a difficult year together as you're mayor and my year is the first year of owning the business. Instantly, we had to shift to PPE manufacturing and we made face shields and curtains, bus barriers. We actually made it through without any layoffs at all and we missed no shipments to our customers. If you think of some of the clients that we had, the Montrose Police Department, some of the local bus shops were also our clients to help us through. In addition to that, when we got to the fall, we worked with the city to provide teepees for restaurants. And when Chelsea called me and asked me how we might help out with outdoor spaces, I presented an idea that I called TP-ing the town and said, hey, we don't have the ability to make some custom structures, but we do have quite a few teepees that we'd be willing to rent for free to the community and help the restaurants hopefully stay open and give them some additional spaces. One of the other things that hit us, that I think hit many businesses, is we had, we weren't able to have a holiday party due to COVID-19. And as a first-year owner of the business, that was a pretty hard thing to come to terms with. We didn't have a team building event. I made a conscious decision to say, hey, I wanted to reinvest back in the community. And we decided to buy $50 worth of Montrose bucks for every member of our crew to make sure that we could keep that money right here in town. So pretty proud of some of those things that helped us get through 2020. Big issue today, of course, is we need new space. We have a significant amount of product that we're trying to put through a very small place and our sales are growing faster than our current facility will allow us to grow. There are no other facilities within the Montrose area for us to keep the company here in town without building a new one. There just isn't something available for us. If we look at the project and our vision, we're looking for a destination sites where our employees will be proud to work, a place where the best of Montrose is gonna be showcased. We know that the project as intended here is gonna include an outdoor display village along the Unco-Brody River. And you'll, you'll notice right there on the corner of Colorado Outdoors and the river itself is where this display village will be. We've got a rendering of what that might look like here at the bottom of the screen. The village will also combine a walk-by experience for the visitors along the trail along with a try-before-you-buy overnight rental experience with the intent of trying to make sure that people not only get to come and visit our facility, but they get to share that with the rest of the community. Little bit of an idea what the building's gonna look like and what the layout will look like. It has been given an address of 1227 Mayfly Drive. Looking at it to be about a 30,000 square feet manufacturing and office space. Intentionally, we were gonna build 20,000 square feet for us and 10,000 for a tenant. But based on our sales so far this year, by the time we get the building up, I don't know that we're gonna need a tenant. We're gonna need the space. I already talked about the village along the river trail. And there's also another piece that we've put in the project, which is a partnership for a public and private use restroom facility on the north end of the trail. I'm not sure if you can see my cursor, but it'd be dead center right next to the teepee at the bottom of the screen. We've got a section of land that we're working with the city in planning on as to how we could actually donate a piece of land back to the city to do a partnership with a restroom. I've noticed that on the north end of the trail, there, there are no restroom facilities. And with the bench across the curve there, seems like a great place to have one. We will be accomplishing the project with a focus on local and regional contractors and we're pretty proud to be able to do that. Couple other things that we've already noted. Funding will come through Timberline Bank and the SBA. Few of the other numbers there, just under $7 million in total construction cost for the entire campus. We hope to break ground here and literally within 30 days. We expect a pretty significant growth in our business. As we've already said, we're growing very fast right now with our new sales. And what we've already figured, since we purchased the business, we've already grown 20 employees and we expect to add another 20 in maybe the next 24 months, which would be, you know, 60 jobs, potential even in the year after that, should we catch fire as we expect to right now. We also have an objective to increase the average salary of our employees. That is, at the time of purchase, was about just under $40,000 to $50,000. We are not asking for any job creation incentives. You know, I really feel like it's my job to grow the business and, and I'm excited to be able to bring that and make that part of our, you know, our business and the opportunity for the community. Our requests, and maybe I'll put these up on the screen here and, and make a couple of notes and maybe a point for Bill to come back to and speak about. These would be the fees that we're looking for and the funding that we're looking for. One of the things to note here is of the Mura funding of $854,000 roughly in dollars. Right now, with the way the current bids are looking and we have to wait to get to final bid, we're estimating that 67% of that work are gonna be Montrose-based contractors and 28% of it are gonna be Western slope-based with just a couple of dollars that'll be spent outside the community. So almost every penny of what the Mura board will be authorizing is likely to be Western slope and Montrose-based contractors, which is one of my focuses, is to try and keep as much money of our project here at home as we can. We'll also be asking for Maiden Montrose marketing assistance, $30,000 over three years. And I'll show you a little bit about what that might look like. If we're looking at social media and what our present- If we're looking at social media and what our presence is and what that might bring to the community, uh, from a Facebook perspective, Ivy Pfeiffer, Marketing Manager, spent a little bit of time, uh, trying to pull up some of the numbers that are, are current right now for the City of Montrose, Visit Montrose, Dart, some of the other local outdoor companies, Ross Enable Real, Scott Flyrod, Geiser Systems and Colorado Outdoors itself. To give you an idea of what that scope looks like and, and the number of likes and followers that those, uh, groups have. Currently, we're at eighty thousand, um, and we are growing exponentially in, in our reach and we are anticipating that by twenty twenty-two, that number's going to hit, uh, almost a hundred and twenty-three thousand for our reach, which is going to be pretty significant. And if you look at the rest of the list, um, almost totals the entire list or beats the entire list that's up there in just one company's exposure for the community. Uh, we think with our destination site, we will be able to drive a lot of traffic through the Montrose area and we're excited to share our, our campus with folks. Some other things that we're looking at, uh, are, uh, putting the Maiden Montrose logo over our cover photos. Uh, you can see it here on what it might look like in the lower right-hand side of our website and what that looks like, our Facebook page, uh, um, some other stats there. We've had fifty-four percent growth already this year. Um, average post reads about forty thousand people and uh, our advertising, you know, is somewhere around two hundred to two hundred and fifty impressions, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand impressions per month. Website itself, um, you know, we, we've got average visitors at about twenty-two thousand visitors, uh, a month coming to our website. Thirty percent growth over twenty twenty. So, um, when we look at our email marketing that we do in addition to that, you'll see where the logo gets added into our signature lines. And, um, you know, right now we've got about thirty-eight thousand subscribers and, uh, you know, our growth rate on, on our email list is about thirteen percent. I think I go through all these slides to, to show you a little bit to say, um, you know, even though when we send our product packaging out, you know, we're going to put a Maiden Montrose sticker on the side of a crate, um, the leverage that the, the city is going to get out of this partnership is pretty significant, um, for, uh, the, the beauty of partnering with a company like ours that really is proud of being here in, in the City of Montrose. And I think for now, that will, uh, finish my part of the presentation. Um, I do have, uh, some other pictures and things to share as we, just to give you an idea, some of the differences we make for our, our customers literally around Colorado, around the US and around the world. So with that, I'd open up, uh, if there's any questions for me.
All right, counsel, do you have any questions? Zach, do you have any questions? If not, uh, do we have any hands up out there? No public comments? Yeah, we're, we're calling for any public comments. All right.
Can I just ask a question?
Yes.
I just wanted to know if, uh, Mr. Bell had additional information we should be thinking about or looking about, uh, on this?
I think I just want to highlight what's, what's printed, uh, before everyone, it's in the packet and, and John alluded to it, but just to make sure that we're fully transparent in what we're considering tonight. Uh, in, in the documents, we have the information sheet that just gives a summary of the project and narrative.
Looks like, uh, we are not hearing anything on this end. I'm sorry.
Is that better?
Mr. Gibson, can you hear me? No, I think we're not getting any.
Comes with an echo, but it's coming.
All right. Bill, did you want to repeat anything?
Can you hear us now, John?
Nope.
We're just going to go with the, the Logitech Zoom and everything else. So we should be good now.
How about now, John?
That sounds great. Thank you.
Thanks for bearing with us. We're, you know, we've only been doing this COVID stuff for a year. We're going to figure it out. Greg's doing a great job. It's, uh, it's always something new, it seems like. So I just want to continue by saying that in the packets, we have the information sheet, which highlights the narrative of the company and talks about the job creation and, and the vision of the, the company. And then in the middle of that document, it talks about the potential investment of the Mura and the city. But then there's actually an agreement in there, a developer's agreement. And the agreement, uh, takes those parameters, puts them into contractual form and obligates, uh, Colorado Yurt to perform in return for any incentives the city, uh, and the URA ultimately may provide. So just to highlight those, uh, building permit fee waivers is done at the manager level, but they're always included when we come to council because it's part of the overall package. And that's a hundred and five thousand estimate, uh, on that project. The thirty thousand over three years, marketing assistance in partnership with OBT on the Maiden Montrose campaign. And we've done a few of those over the years with other businesses and it's worked out really well, uh, to get Montrose name out across the country and worldwide, depending on the distribution for that particular business. And then, uh, water and sewer connection fee abatements, uh, that requires council approval. Man, I don't have that authority as manager. Twenty-nine thousand sixty-five dollars for that is the estimate. And then the estimated horizontal infrastructure, uh, non-building site improvements. And just as a reminder to everyone, especially people watching who aren't too familiar with our processes for business development here in Montrose, our city takes a conservative approach where we don't usually hand out money directly to developers or to business owners. We invest in property in our community and so, uh, we would be doing non-building items. They are responsible to build their structure and their vertical building. We would help out with property improvements, parking lot, curb gutter sidewalk, those types of things that are not in their building itself. And that way, if the business were to ever leave our community, that infrastructure is left behind and our community sees the value of that moving forward. So it's an investment in our community. It's not a handout. And I think that's important to remind everyone every time we talk about these projects. It makes us a little different than some other communities. Technically under TIF, uh, financing and URAs, you could invest in those types of things, but we've heard from our community, we want to take a little bit more of a conservative stance, but still be pro-business. So that dollar amount, uh, is estimated to be eight hundred fifty-three thousand nine hundred thirty-five dollars. And in the agreement, uh, they have a timeline, uh, to perform. As John mentioned, they're looking at starting here in the next month and a half to break ground and they want to be out at site when we were talking today. John mentioned he'd love to have his staff moved into their new building, uh, in January. It would be their goal, definitely by February, but to have everything moved over in January. Because that would be a slow time of year for them on production side and be the right time to make that move. We have given a little extra time just because you never know with contractor schedules and what might come up in today's environment. Uh, so that's in there as well. And then the process would be if council chooses to approve this tonight, then tomorrow morning we have a, a URA board meeting, a board meeting of our urban renewal authority. And that board is, uh, nine members, five members is the city council. And then we have representatives from the school district, the county, special districts and, um, and our county rep is the county assessor. So we have a variety of people that sit on that, that group, uh, other than the city council. A similar presentation would take place, but that would be the, uh, URA creating a promissory note to pay the city back. And so tonight's approval would be to take money out of our undesigned fund balance and the city has adequate fund balance, uh, to cover, uh, this project and considerably more, but definitely the amount in this project, we would loan that as a city to the URA. There'd be a promissory note where the URA pledges to pay the city back with property tax revenues generated by this project. And this one, I'm really excited about because not only is it a local business expanding, adding good paying jobs to the community, it's bringing in new manufacturing and commercial space that we don't already have. And so it's adding to the overall tax base on the property tax side of things. And so running the numbers, uh, over the life of the URA, this, this project should generate approximately a hundred and five thousand a year in property taxes over a twenty-year period. So two point one million would come back to the URA in exchange for the investment of eight hundred and fifty-three thousand approximately. That's about an eight and a half year payback, uh, and then the rest of that, the life of the URA goes to offset the original cost of the eight to nine million that the city, uh, loaned to the URA for all of the other underground infrastructure, water and sewer, for gutter sidewalk, to put the major streets and those types of things in there. And so when people ask if a good investment in the tax increment finance sense, anything that pays itself back in less than fifteen years is a very, very successful business model. As you get out further, like housing, it's a little more difficult because you have a reduced residential property tax rate. In this case, it's a commercial valuation and I did talk to Brad Hughes, our county assessor. We also talked to Anderson Analytics and had them run an analysis and a cash flow on the project. So I believe we've done the due diligence to show that it would be a good investment.
Thank you, Bill.
Mr. Mayor, could I, uh, clear up some potential confusion?
Certainly.
After the work session, I was contacted by about four or five different people asking if, uh, my family business, uh, was going to be doing the construction. Alcorn Construction is a family business. It is not my family business. Amy and Chris Alcorn, uh, appear to have founded it about thirteen years ago. Uh, I am not related to either of them or am I in any way related, connected, uh, to the construction company. I just, uh, want to endorse the name of the company, uh, but other than that.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
Then I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve a business expansion incentives and development agreement between the City of Montrose and the Secret Creek Group LLC, doing business as Colorado Yurt Company, to include permit fee and utility abatements, Office of Business and Tourism Maiden Montrose Marketing Assistance and Horizontal Site Infrastructure Improvements as presented.
I'd like to sec, I'll second it.
Oh, okay. I second it.
All right.
All right. Now, let's please vote.
And that passes unanimously. Item number ten is a new tavern license, Wild Horse Wine and Whiskey LLC. The city council will consider the tavern license at four thirty-nine East St. for Wild Horse Wine and Whiskey LLC, doing business as Wild Horse Wine and Whiskey LLC, for consumption on licensed premise. City attorney, Mr. Alcorn.
Before the city council was an application for a tavern liquor license for Wild Horse Wine and Whiskey as noted, four thirty-nine is May. Uh, this is for consumption on premises and for this application, the neighborhood has been defined as the City of Montrose. Uh, this is a public hearing for a new tavern liquor license and it is incumbent on the applicant to show the current needs of the neighborhood as defined by the city are not currently met by the existing facilities and the adult inhabitants of the city wish to have this, this new establishment. Uh, the permit is in order. The fees have been paid from the city staff, review of the application. We have seen nothing that would prevent council from issuing a license notwithstanding this hearing. The council can make a decision at the end of this hearing or defer the decision for up to thirty days. This time I'd ask the applicants to virtually step forward, introduce themselves to council, announce their home address for the record.
I'm, okay, there we go. Yes, uh, my name is Scott Majoris. My, uh, wife is Julie Majoris. She's up on Log Hill and she's been trying to log on. I, I don't know if she's been able to do that. Uh, we live at twenty Fisher Canyon, uh, Court in Log Hill. And, um, we, uh, purchased the building here, uh, on November of two thousand and twenty with the intention of, uh, providing a, uh, some sort of service to the community. The name of the business is Wild Horse Wine and Whiskey. We'd like to, uh, specialize in an upscale type of offering of, uh, local wines and local whiskeys that are distilled here in the area. Uh, we also will be offering a limited menu of salads from, uh, locally grown produce, local cheeses from, um, La Lefa and, um, jellies and preserves, uh, from Palisades and local bread from Norwood. We intend on being open only four days a week, Thursday through Sunday. Our hours will be from, uh, four o'clock to nine o'clock at the very latest. And we want to provide an upscale experience. It's a historical building. I believe it's the third building to be built in Montrose. We want to preserve its historic nature. It will have a Western theme. It will be not the cheapest place in town to drink, but it won't be, uh, too pricey. Our intentions are to have people come in perhaps after work, meet with coworkers, have a glass of wine, have a salad, go home, uh, or move on to a restaurant, uh, in, in the area. It, in, in the beginning, it'll probably be just my wife and myself, maybe a third, uh, uh, person to help us, uh, with whatever, uh, the, uh, customer needs might be. And, um, that's it. We, we intend to provide a really nice atmosphere and, uh, support our local, uh, wineries.
I appreciate the detailed introduction because my next question was going to be, let council know a little bit about your establishment. I think you did a fantastic job on that. To get to some of the decisions that council needs to make, uh, Mr. Mayor, do you, uh, do you and councilors wish to examine the petition at this point? Or do you want me to, uh, start with some of the preliminary questions?
Uh, why don't you go ahead and I'll have some questions at the end.
Okay. Okay. Uh, so sir, is it your intention to draw customers throughout the City of Montrose?
Yes.
Uh, so this is why we've determined the neighborhood for this area to be the city, uh, not just a neighborhood within the city. Do you object to this determination?
No.
Uh, do you think the neighborhood is in need of your establishment?
From the reaction we've gotten, as we've gotten, are our petitions signed? Yes.
Okay, I'll, uh, let me review your petition. A hundred and four signatures were submitted. Thirty-nine were determined to be insufficient. Twenty-five outside city limits. Eleven, uh, provided insufficient addresses to fail to indicate supporter opposition. One failed to provide the signer's name. So sixty-five signatures were determined to be valid in support of the license. Uh, some of the highlights of the comments, uh, are as follows. We need a lively Main Street. Uh, we'd love to have a wine whiskey bar down town. Looking forward to it. Explanation point. Uh, please, uh, please, please open was, uh, two. Uh, we'll support this. A couple of explanation points. I'm excited for this. So excited, very excited. Three and awesome. So, uh, you're relying in part on your petition to determine the needs for your establishment, correct?
Yes.
Um, any other input you want to give specifically to the needs of the license in the neighborhood?
Well, I have with me, sitting next to me, Glee Woolcott, the former owner of the building for twenty-seven years and, uh, uh, her business is Tiffany's, et cetera. It's been here, it's been a mainstay on Main Street. And, uh, Glee has been telling people what's coming. She can give you an idea of what the response has been and she's right here, Glee Woolcott.
We'd love to hear that. If you could identify yourself and also, uh, read your address.
If you could identify yourself and also, uh, read your address into the, uh, record and it can be your business address.
My name is Glee Westcott, former owner, owner of Tiffany, et cetera, four thirty-nine Main. My present address is five seven eight oh seven Kiowa Road, Montrose County. And, um, I've been in business for twenty-two years in this building, one of the most historic buildings on Main Street. And in seeing the business climate downtown, this is something that will be needed by locals as well as people traveling and visiting. The main people, um, on Main Street are those visiting at six, seven o'clock in the evening, looking for something to do. And that's why I had later hours and had great customer service. And I know I can count on Mister and Mrs. Mahors to do the same thing and provide a event center, a wonderful climate in this building. I'm looking forward to them being a caretaker of this historic monument, basically, and doing even better things to it to enhance our downtown.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, and then, um, for the petitioner, uh, the City of Montrose is very serious about enforcing the liquor laws of the state of Colorado. Would you please describe your familiarity with those laws?
Uh, I have to admit, I'm, uh, not, uh, really educated on the details of it other than knowing that, uh, people who drink too much shouldn't be served and people underage shouldn't be served. Uh, we, uh, my wife was a sommelier at the Hyatt Hotel when she was younger. I was a bartender in my earlier years and recently was a bartender over at the, uh, Chapita Hotel on, at the Sky Bar. Um, as far as the laws are concerned, we, uh, intend on going to the alcohol server training. Um, we've been notified on how we can register to do that. Uh, we will have fairly large investment here and we intend on protecting that. We can't afford to jeopardize it or our reputations in the community. So, uh, we'll be looking forward to any knowledge we could gain uh, as far as the liquor laws are concerned in the City of Colorado, I mean, in the state of Colorado and in the City of Montrose.
Uh, you mentioned that you're going to start off small with you and your wife as you, uh, add employees. Would you be willing to commit to council that, uh, you would ensure that managers servers would all be attending the liquor license training that the city clerk puts on?
Absolutely.
Um, you've made mention of, just recently, or, uh, previously, that, uh, you have been involved, uh, in the, uh, bar and beverage industry. Uh, in, have you previously held a liquor license?
No.
Are you familiar with the underage drinking task force here in the Montrose area?
I am not intimately familiar with it, but I would expect it to be an important part of, uh, our public safety.
Absolutely, both liquor enforcement and, uh, the Montrose City Police, uh, will occasionally, uh, have an underage person that will, uh, will come in, try to purchase out an I D. And if someone that appears to, uh, be underage and is trying to purchase out an I D, uh, what do you think you will do?
I will, first of all, we will, uh, identify everybody, uh, that looks under fifty, you know, uh, with their proper identification. Uh, and we're going to protect our business. And, uh, if there's anybody that, uh, seems like, uh, they would jeopardize that, we're definitely going to do whatever we have to do to protect ourselves in accordance with the laws.
Okay, thank you, that concludes my questions, Mister Mayor, I'm sure you and council will have some further questions.
Counsel, any questions?
So it wasn't clear to me if, um, underage people can even come into your establishment. Uh, can I bring my grandchild in, uh, or do you have to be twenty-one to get in the door?
Well, I would say this wouldn't be an appropriate place for a grandchild or anybody underage. Uh, I am not sure what the laws are, if we can prohibit people who appear to be underage from entering the establishment, we, we definitely will do that. Uh, like I said, it's going to be an upscale place. It's, it's going to be very clear that it's not a place for, for children. And, um, if we're able to keep children, grandchildren, if that's legal to keep them from entering our establishment, then I think that's a great policy.
I think our, our community would want to know, um, how soon you might be open.
Okay, well, that's a, that's a good question. As you know, everybody's busy, carpenters, plumbers, electricians. And, uh, Glee is still, uh, moving out. Uh, we take over possession of the, uh, building on June first and, uh, we're, we're currently, uh, pursuing electricians, plumbers, permits. Uh, and we're, we're, we're hustling as best we can and there's a lot of unknowns out there. It's just getting these, these, uh, tradesmen to get in and get the open window where they can come in and do it. Our renovations are not going to be that extensive. Surprisingly enough, the building is in amazing shape. Uh, and, um, it's going to be, it's going to be pretty simple. We'll have a very small, uh, kitchen that will offer a limited amount of food, very simple, no hood or, or, uh, oven or fryer or anything like that. It'll be basically salads and cheese and cracker boards and, uh, just appetizer type, uh, type, uh, foods. So if everything goes well, it could, it could be sometime later July.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
And Mister Mayor, you want to, uh, check to see if there's any public com- uh, public comment for it?
Do we have any, uh, public con-
You actually will be hearing.
Okay, we'll, we'll open the hearing. We vote for the hearing. Greg, do we have anybody else?
I see none, Mister Mayor.
Alright, in that case, we close the hearing. Any other questions, counsel? In that case, I would accept a motion.
I would make a motion to approve a new tavern liquor license for Wild Horse Wine and Whiskey L L C, doing business as Wild Horse Wine and Whiskey L L C, for consumption on a licensed premises as presented.
Do I have a second? One second. Do you have a second? Are you ready for us to vote? Please vote. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And good luck to you. Mayor? Okay, I think we're ready. Item number eleven? New lodging, entertainment liquor license. Precedents, productions. The city council will consider a new lodging and entertainment liquor license at five one one East Main Street for precedents, productions, doing business as precedents, productions, for the consumption, consumption on the licensed premises. Mister Alcorn?
Before the city council was an application for a lodging and entertainment liquor license for precedents, productions, we'll find out how to actually say this shortly, located at five eleven East Main for the consumption on premises. Uh, for this application, the neighborhood has been defined as the city. This is a public hearing for a lodging and entertainment liquor license. So since this is the first time, I believe we've had a lodging and entertainment license, let me explain that a little bit. It was created in twenty sixteen by the state. It allows for the sale of beverages by the drink, only to customers for on-premise consumption and can be issued to a lodging facility or an entertainment facility that provides the public with sports or entertainment activities. Uh, so that's the definition of a lodging and entertainment liquor license. It is incumbent on the applicant to show the current needs of the neighborhood and find that the city are not currently being met by the existing facilities and the adult inhabitants of the city wish to have this new establishment. The permit is in order, the fees have been paid from the city staff review of the application. We have seen nothing that would prevent the council from issuing a license notwithstanding this hearing. Uh, the council can make a decision at the end of this hearing or defer the decision up to thirty days. At this time, I'd like the applicant, uh, to raise their hand if they're not already on it. Jordan? Jordan Carlles. Um, and I would like him to introduce himself to council, announce their address for the record and tell us a little bit, a little bit about your plans for the establishment.
Uh, my name is Jordan Carlles, uh, my address is the five eleven East Main Upper. Um, and the event center, uh, is the, it's called Precedents Productions and is in some ways, uh, an offshoot of the Precedents Music Academy. So the, uh, hall itself is, uh, basically a massive two-room, um, concert and an event hall. So there's one main ballroom and one, um, about half size of the main ballroom. Um, individual rooms to put on, uh, other musical events, concerts, bringing in people from, uh, the local area to begin with and then state and nationwide as we get going. Um, local theater troops, um, kind of like Ted Talks, the Ignite Talks, things like that. Um, comedy, um, it's also open as an event center for, uh, private parties like weddings. Um, and we've already started booking in a large part, like nonprofits, um, using it for space rentals for, uh, many of their different events.
Okay, thank you.
Mister Mayor, do you wish, uh, me to ask some of the preliminary questions? Or do you and council want to examine the petition at this point?
If you proceed, we'll catch it afterwards.
Okay.
Uh, sir, is it your intention to draw customers from throughout the City of Montrose?
Yes.
Uh, so we have determined that the neighborhood for this hearing will be set as the city. Do you object to this determination?
No.
Uh.
Do you think that there's a desire on behalf of the inhabitants of the city for your establishment?
Yes, a massive one.
Okay, um, I'll go into the petition, uh, in a moment. But, uh, why, why do you feel that there's, uh, as you describe a massive desire for another liquor license to be, uh, added?
So the, the liquor license is, uh, kind of expected to go along with, uh, the venue and the events that we'll be putting on, um, for it. So the, the draw is the, uh, the concerts and all the, the events that we're going to be putting on. Um, we've already launched, we've already, uh, started running, we've got concerts running, um, at least two nights a week. We're also hosting the Valley Youth Orchestra concerts, um, and so, other small things. So the draw, uh, is not the liquor license, the draw is the venue. The liquor license is to serve the patrons something that they expect.
Uh, and you, and you mentioned weddings as well, or wedding receptions as well?
Yes.
And, uh, are you intimating then that you feel that, uh, there would be an expectation at a wedding reception venue to have a liquor license?
Yes, from, we've already had several, um, and every single one of them did request or, or need that.
Okay, uh, you submitted a petition, there were forty-six signatures submitted. Eleven signatures were determined to be insufficient, eight outside city limits, two provided insufficient address, one failed to indicate the age. So thirty-five, uh, signatures were determined to be valid in support of the license. Um, in comments, uh, two were specifically said yes and two yes please. Uh, would you like council to consider the petition as part of this hearing as why, uh, the community is desiring this liquor license being granted?
Uh, yes, the petitions were signed in my presence, uh, at actual concerts that we were hosting upstairs. There would have been a great deal more signatures on it, but we were also pulling, uh, people from Ridgeway, Yuray and Grand Junction.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, so the City of Montrose is serious about enforcing the liquor laws of the state of Colorado. Would you please describe your familiarity with these laws?
Uh, not extreme, but enough, I would say sufficient.
Hey, uh, do you have any? In, uh, have you previously held a liquor license?
No.
Are you familiar with the underage drinking task force here in the Montrose area?
I am.
Uh, you say that ominously. Um, uh, please describe your understanding of task force.
I think it's a, one of the, uh, it's a fantastic idea to kind of keep track of, of things that are going on. Um, it's one I'm in full support of.
Okay, are you familiar with the available liquor law education and server training classes, uh, for licensees and their employees offered by the city?
Yes, we're already signed up for it.
Uh, would you be willing to commit to council that if your license is granted, that you, the licensing managers and your servers will all attend such training?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Mister Mayor, that concludes my questions. I'll pass it over to council for questions and then for you to hold a hearing, uh, of public comment.
Alright, counsel, any questions?
Like I said, um, I guess I'd like to say, and this is more of a comment than a question. When I came on council five years ago, providing jobs for kids that grew up here was really a big priority. Jordan, you, the rest of you may not know, grew up here, he's one of us. Um, he's done a fantastic job of getting the most beautiful room, music room in this town filled with great music. He's already putting on jazz concerts on Friday night. Jordan, when will you have your liquor license?
Uh, it's currently, uh, going to the state. The last I heard was that it was in acceptance, uh, on the eighteenth of March. So they said about a month, so about April eighteenth is a rough estimate from the state.
Fantastic, why, if you've not been in the music room that Jordan is talking about, you should go there just to see that room. It's got the most amazing mosaic, a couple of skylight, um, that you may have ever seen. It's, it's, it's a true gem in this community that has really been abandoned for twenty, thirty years and, and it was brought back several years ago. And Jordan, I just want to congratulate you on creating what is going to be a fantastic music, uh, venue for this community. Congratulations, guy, you've worked really hard. Uh, I've known Jordan since he was in middle school. Um, he had to have been in Montrose, I don't know how many years ago, Jordan, but Centennial Junior High, now middle school, um, has raised some of the most fantastic sax players you've ever wanted to hear. Um.
And a lot of us are still playing professionally.
That a boy.
That was, that came down from Sean Lund, the fantastic band director up there.
There you go. I just want to say congratulations and I'm going to be there soon, uh, congratulations, guy.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question, I don't know if this is, I don't know if this is for the city attorney or for you, Jordan, but since you haven't had a license, how, how have you been operating with, with weddings or fundraisers for nonprofits? Have they had to bring in specific event licenses or? I'm just, I want, I want to be a little more clear on what's, how you've been doing it up till now.
So previous, the only thing that we've been doing was, uh, like weddings would bring in caterers. Um, so there was no liquor, there was no, um, that part of it was just absent. Um, the, the food service, and that's, along with this kind, it comes to food service, we will be providing food as well. Um, and it's effectively the, the minimum, what we call the, uh, finger foods, pizzas, sandwiches, things like that, um, to serve the, um, uh, liquor license requirements. So that's appetizer plates and desserts. And that license, uh, I just received about two weeks ago. Um, so we're getting set for all that. Other than that, it'll be catered event from outside licensed caters locally.
Thanks for clarifying that, I was a little confused, thanks.
Yeah.
Roy, do you have a minute? No. David? Alright, uh, in that case, I'll hold the hearing. Greg, do we have anybody with their hand up?
Seeing none, Mister Mayor.
Alright, in that case, we'll close the hearing and... Could I have a motion, please?
Mister Mayor?
Yes.
I'd move to approve a new lodging and entertainment liquor license at five eleven East Main Street for precedent productions, doing business as precedent productions, for consumption on the licensed premise as presented.
Second that? Alright, please vote.
And that passes by the majority.
Next item is number twelve. Ordinance twenty-five thirty on second reading. Council consideration of an ordinance twenty-five thirty on second reading. An ordinance of the city of counsel, city of Montrose, Colorado, vacating three right-of-ways within the city of Montrose. Assistant engineer Scott Murphy will give a speech.
I don't need to vote yet. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so this is second reading, so nothing new from what we talked about previously, except for some condition language I'll, I'll speak to. But for anybody who's freshly tuning in, this is the vacation of three rights-of-way on the Stover property. So the Stover property was originally fully owned by the city and leased to Stovers as part of the economic incentives that were put into place in the nineteen seventies, I believe. With the new owners, so when they left town as part of that lease agreement, they exercised their option to buy that property. As part of that, they go through and actually do a subdivision on the property to break up the front retail area from the factory itself. And with that, we clean up all of the rights-of-way, utility easements, access, things of that sort. So as part of that process, became pretty apparent that there were some rights-of-way that were essentially unnecessary for the public purpose. So rights-of-way are generally geared towards conveyance of people and utilities and infrastructure. There's a right-of-way that goes behind the building that is really servicing only the building. Think of, you know, the back of a Walmart or a Target, those aren't rights-of-way, those are parts of their parking lot. In this case, that'll be the case for this, uh, building going forward when it was all under city ownership, it didn't really matter. Under the lease scenario, but where this will become, or has become private property, now we're cleaning up the rights-of-way and preserving the streets that will access multiple lots and serve a public benefit in vacating those that won't. So within the packet, there is a figure showing the three properties that are being vacated. The ordinance action authorizes that, and then I would ask that this action is concurrent, or is being performed concurrent with the subdivision. And so just so it's clear for the record, I would ask to add a condition that the ordinance can be, can be approved here, but that it be recorded and finalized upon approval of the minor subdivision, the Stover Minor Subdivision by city staff. So that those are in the record together and recorded together, so with that, happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions? Drink, do we have anyone?
See no one from the general public who wishes to ask a question, Mr. Mayor?
All right, in that case, we have no public comments, I would consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-five thirty on second reading as presented. With the condition that the associated minor subdivision of the Stover property be approved by city staff.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, motion is safe, please vote.
That passes unanimously. Item number thirteen.
Ordinance twenty-five thirty-one on second reading. City council would consider an ordinance twenty-five thirty-one on second reading. An ordinance of the city of Montrose, Colorado, mending the zoning district designation of lot one for the Stover Minor Subdivision property rezone map. P public to I-one light industrial, lot two and lot three of the Stover Minor Subdivision property rezone map. P public to B-two highway commercial. Staff planner, Amy Sharp, we have Amy's online.
I am, thank you, Mayor and City Council, I'm going to start by sharing my screen here. Right, can you see that okay?
Yes, yes.
Right. All right, as you mentioned, this is a rezone of the Stover property which was just discussed previously. This is located just west of Townsend Avenue and north of Oak Grove Road. The site is approximately twenty-seven acres and as you mentioned, the request is to rezone from P-public to I-one light industrial district and B-two highway commercial district. Would also include not just the, our property that's in green, but the right-of-ways and the road as well. So this is the rezone map, so as I mentioned, this has just the parcels located, it's going to be the minor subdivision part. But we will also administratively bring in these roads that I'm pointing to here so that those are also zoned accordingly with the adjacent properties. As stated in our rezone criteria, these are the criteria that shall be considered when rezoning a property. This is in your packet as well, so I won't read through all that in detail. The B-two highway commercial district is intended to provide for businesses oriented to serving the motoring public. And the I-one light industrial district is intended to accommodate research, manufacturing uses and a transportation hub. And this is consistent with the history of how this property has been used in the past while it was zoned as P-public. It's adjacent to properties that are zoned I-one, B-two, MHR, which is manufactured housing district and R-two low-density district. Now, as I mentioned, the city can administratively include the internal and adjacent roads that are currently zoned P to match the adjacent property. This is listed as an employment center and general commercial in the future land use map, which also fits in nicely with the proposed zoning. I have details in your packet as to what some of the intents are for those different categories, so you can read more about that in your packet. We discussed that at some of our previous meetings as well. Staff finds that the proposal does meet the rezone criteria stated in section four-four twenty-nine A. It does meet the intent of the I-one light industrial district and B-two highway commercial district. It's also in compliance with our comprehensive plan in the future land use map. It's compatible with the existing uses in the surrounding area. And the planning commission did recommend approval of this rezone request at the March tenth planning commission meeting. And staff is recommending approval of the rezone request tonight. I'll open it up to any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions? Do we have any, buddy with their hand up out there, Mr. Story?
I see no one from the public wishing to make public comment.
All right, and then that's, I would consider a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-five thirty-one on second reading, presented.
Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that we approve ordinance twenty-five thirty-one on second reading as presented.
I'll second that motion.
All right, please vote.
That passes unanimously. The next item, golly, we're only to fourteen.
Next item is Valley Ranch Addition, Adduction. City council will hold a hearing on the annexation of the Valley Ranch Addition North. Staff planner, assistant planner, Amy Sharp.
All right, thank you again, so I'm going to start, share my screen again and I'm going to share information on both the annexation and the rezone. So my presentation will kind of go together, so the next two items on your agenda kind of presented all in one, even though there's two different actions. So you guys have seen this before, it came to work session overview back in February and then we had council resolution to set a hearing date. The planning commission zoning hearing was back on March tenth. We did submit an annexation impact report to the county back on March seventeenth. And then we have first reading tonight and second reading on April twentieth. This map shows the general location of the area, as you can see here, it's located south of Ogden Road and then north of Otter Road and it's east of South Townsend Avenue. This property is outlined in this map by the highlighted yellow, it's a little bit over sixty acres in size. It is within the city's urban growth boundary and the city of Montrose Water and Sewer Service Area. It is urbanizing in the area where the one-six is contiguous to the city limits. You can see the city limits on this map as shown kind of in the white or gray area to the north. As I mentioned, we did have an annexation impact report and an annexation agreement was also required in order to address future transportation needs and a road going through that area, which I'll show in a next slide. The annexation is going to allow for future residential development in this area. So moving on, past the annexation to the zoning, the planning commission will recommend to council a zoning district. And that's what was done on March tenth. As you can see from this map, this is the zoning of the surrounding areas, so just north of this area is zoned R-one A. And they are proposing to zone the north portion of this boundary as R-three A, which is medium-high density district. And then R-two is low-density at the south end, so it goes from higher density closest to Ogden Road to lower density as you move south. And this is just an approximate boundary line of where the zoning would be split. In our comprehensive plan, the land use chapter three, it is listed as residential mixed density medium, which allows for all sorts of different mixed housing types, including single-family homes, townhomes, duplexes and triplexes. So we believe that does fit nicely with the proposed zoning as well. So this is an enlarged view of our transportation map, it's found in the comprehensive plan. If you can see my pointer, it's kind of in this area right here where there's this posed road. And so I have an arrow pointing to it here with an enlarged version of it. This is included in the annexation agreement that the approximate location of this road and the right-of-way would be dedicated as part of this annexation for future development. This is listed as growth area two in our comprehensive plan, which just means that there's infrastructure nearby. And this is the summary, so as I mentioned, the area is urbanizing, we had an annexation agreement and impact report. The proposal is consistent with our public health, safety and welfare, our annexation policies and the comprehensive plan. The planning commission did recommend approval of the initial zoning request on this parcel on March tenth. And staff is recommending approval of both the annexation tonight as well as the R-three A medium-high density district and the R-two low-density district. I'll open it up for any questions.
Counsel, any questions? In that case, I'll take a motion for resolution twenty-two-one dash. No public comments, any public comments?
I see none.
All right, that motion, please.
Mayor, I move, we approve resolution twenty-two-one dash zero five, city council consideration. The findings of fact for the annexation of Valley Ranch Addition North.
I'll second that motion.
I have a first and second, please vote.
And that passes unanimously.
On ordinance twenty-five thirty-two, which is also referenced, are there any questions on that?
Over here.
Open a hearing on that. Thank you. Have any comments on the hearing? All right, then we'll close the hearing and I will accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to pass ordinance twenty-five thirty-two on first reading as presented.
Second?
I'll second it.
Do we have a first and second, please vote?
And that passes unanimously.
Item number fifteen. This is city council consideration of an ordinance twenty-five thirty-three on first reading. An ordinance of the city of Montrose, Colorado, providing for the zoning of Valley Ranch Addition North as R-three A medium-density district and R-two low-density district. Are there any additional questions on that? All right, and I will hold a hearing. Any comments, any questions?
I don't see any.
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor.
All right, then I'll close the hearing and we'll entertain a motion to pass this ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to consider passing ordinance twenty-five thirty-three on first reading as presented.
A second? I have a first and a second, let's please vote.
That passes unanimously.
The next item is Valley Ranch Addition South Annexation. City council will hold a hearing on the annexation of Valley Ranch South Addition, planner Amy Sharp.
All right, thank you once again, start with sharing my screen, this one is just an extension kind of, it's just south of the one that we just discussed and it's following the same schedule. So I probably won't go into quite as much detail on this because it's exactly the same as the previous one. This one, as I mentioned, is located just directly south of the Valley Ranch Addition North, so the north was right up here. And the south one includes this area highlighted in orange, just east, it's kind of along Otter Road. So this one is seventy acres in size, there's actually two parcels that are included in this annexation. The first one is sixty-six point three-three acres and the other is three point eight-three acres. But it's all considered as one annexation and it's being all proposed as the same zoning as well. This is also within the city's urban growth boundary and water and sewer service area. As you can see here, there's city limits, all to the west of this property is highlighted in the grayish-white area. An annexation agreement was also required for this project and annexation is going to allow for future residential development in this area as well. And this is a site overview, just kind of to give you a general idea as to how the two pieces fit together, the first annexation that we just discussed as well as this one. And kind of the proximity to the Otter Pond area, since that's pretty familiar to all of you as well. The zoning of the surrounding area, so to the west, it's R-three A medium-high density district and a little bit of R-three up here to the north with just medium density. Then everything around here that's not colored is going to be all in the county. And if you might remember from the previous slide, this is going to be higher density up towards the north and then works its way south to lower density. And so this one's going to be proposed as R-one, which is very low-density district. This is a view of the annexation map. This is also listed as residential mixed density medium as the previous annexation was. So it can have a variety of housing types. This is the map that you also saw at the previous one and then a zoomed-in version of the map. So once again, in the annexation agreement, we had them dedicate the road and right-of-way for the future extension of this road going through these two parcels. This is also within growth area two. And this is the summary of what we've just discussed tonight, and this was recommended by planning commission for the zoning at the March tenth meeting. And staff is recommending approval of the annexation and the R-one very-low-density district for this property. I'll open it up to any questions.
Hi, Amy, just for clarification to anybody in the public, we have been through these in our work sessions, so we're very familiar with them. Are there any questions for Amy? Do we have anybody in the public?
I don't see any hands.
In that case, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt resolution twenty-two-one dash six as presented.
Second? I have a first and a second, please vote.
That passes unanimously. The next item is ordinance.
Ordinance twenty-four thirty-four on first reading. City council consideration of this ordinance twenty-five thirty-four on first reading and ordinance of the city of Montrose, Colorado, for the annexation of Valley Ranch South Addition. I'm going to ask, council has any questions? And we'll open up a hearing. Do we have any, first? All right, in that case, we'll close the hearing and I would take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, move to pass ordinance twenty-five thirty-four on first reading as presented.
Second? I have a first and a second, please vote.
And that passes unanimously.
The next item is ordinance twenty-five thirty-five on first reading. City council consideration of an ordinance twenty-five thirty-five on first reading. An ordinance of the city of Montrose, Colorado, providing for the zoning of the Valley Ranch Addition South as R-one very-low-density district. Any other comments on that, Amy?
No, I have nothing further on that one.
Counsel, do you have anything? Then I will open it up for hearing. We have no public comments on that, I'll close the hearing. We have no public comments on that, I'll close the hearing and consider a motion.
Mister Mayor, I move we approve ordinance twenty-five thirty-five on first reading as presented.
I'll second that.
Alright, we have a first and a second, please vote.
Item eighteen.
Is the Highway fifty addition annexation. City council will hold a hearing on the annexation of the Highway fifty addition, senior staff planner Amy Sharp.
Alright, thank you once again. This is a, in a very different area, but this one started at the same time as our other ones, so it's following the same schedule as what I mentioned on the previous two. So I won't read those through to you and it's also in your packet. This one is located right along Highway fifty, so it includes the road and the right of way on either side of Highway fifty. This is a cleanup annexation. So as you can see from this map, is about fifteen point zero four acres. It's within the city's urban growth boundary and city of Montrose water and service area. The area surrounding this is mostly all white and within the city limits with the exception of a little bit here to the north. There's, if you can see my error on the screen here, this property right over here to the north and the east end of it, like along sixty-seven hundred road. Our maps weren't updated quite yet, but this was a recent annexation that we completed last year called the Lynch addition, if any of you remember that. So this is a cleanup annexation from the Lynch addition where we want to bring in the road and the right of way on either side, just to make it easier for emergency response and who's going to respond to road maintenance issues and that sort of thing. So this shows the zoning of the surrounding area, it's kind of a mix of a lot of different things. And we're proposing B two highway commercial district, it makes the most sense as you move from the west to the east, it went from B three closer to town and then kind of moves to B two as you head further east. So we're proposing B two in this area. This is the official annexation map, which is also in your packet. In our comprehensive plan, the future land use map designates this area as major center. Here's a description of the different things that you can find in this area, there's no future development proposed. As I mentioned, this is just bringing the road and the right of way on either side into city limits. This is designated as our growth area one, which just means that infrastructure is already in place in this area. So as I mentioned, the area is urbanizing, it does have more than one sixth of the area contiguous to city limits. We did submitted annexation impact report. The proposal is consistent with public health, safety and welfare, our annexation policies and the comprehensive plan, future land use map. The planning commission did recommend approval of the initial zoning request at the March tenth meeting. And staff is recommending approval of the annexation tonight as well as the B two highway commercial district. That's all, and I'll open it up to any questions.
Thank you Amy, any questions from council? Do we have any public comments? In that case, I would entertain a motion.
Mister Mayor, I recommend we approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero seven, city council consideration of the resolution findings of fact for the annexation of Highway fifty addition.
I'll second it.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, please vote. Next item is ordinance twenty-five thirty-six, first reading. City council consideration of an ordinance twenty-five thirty-six on first reading. An ordinance of the city of Montrose, Colorado for the annexation of Highway fifty addition. Amy?
I don't have anything further, it was all covered in my previous report for you.
Counsel, do you have anything? Then I'll open a hearing. No comments?
No one has raised their hand.
Alright, we'll close the hearing and I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to pass ordinance twenty-five thirty-six on first reading as presented.
I second.
Nineteen. City council consideration of ordinance twenty-five thirty-seven on first reading and ordinance of the city of Montrose, Colorado providing for the zoning of Highway fifty addition as B two highway commercial district. Amy, do you have anything additional to add to that?
I do not.
Counsel, any questions? I'll open up the hearing.
There, I do not see anyone wishing to make comment during the.
Alright, we'll close the hearing and I'll consider a motion.
Mister Mayor, I move that we pass ordinance twenty-five thirty-seven on first reading as presented.
Second. We have a first and a second, please vote.
That passes unanimously.
Ordinance twenty-five thirty-eight on first reading. City council consideration of an ordinance twenty-five thirty-eight on first reading. An ordinance of the city of Montrose, Colorado, amending the zoning district designation of Lot one of Cedar View East Minor subdivision from R six medium density manufactured housing district to B three general commercial district. Senior planner Amy Sharp.
Thank you once again. Okay, this first map shows the general vicinity of the areas, this is located south of East Main Street and it's kind of, it's east of South Hillcrest, kind of over in the Cedar View area, if you know where that's at. This area is approximately two acres, it's just a little bit over that. And the request is to rezone this from R six medium density manufactured housing district to B three general commercial district. And the purpose of the rezone is for an expansion of Turner Automotive. So just a little bit of back history, back in December of last year, we actually recorded a minor subdivision for this particular property, so the request was to split off this parcel that we're asking to rezone tonight in order to have that then as part of Turner Automotive. A minor subdivision is a process that's approved administratively, so that went through our staff and external review process and was recorded back in December of twenty twenty-one. And then tonight is the request to rezone that property so that it matches the same as Turner Automotive. I've mentioned this in the past, but these are our rezone criteria that council and planning commissions shall consider when deciding whether or not to rezone a property, this is also in your packet. The B three general commercial district is intended for a large variety of uses that require large storage areas. This is kind of a photo of the back of Turner Automotive, so this property right here in front of the fence is the area that's going to be requested to be rezoned and then be part of Turner Automotive to expand their business. This area is listed as general commercial in the future land use map, so we feel that that fits very nicely with the proposed rezone request as well that's before you tonight. Staff does find that the rezone request meets all the rezone criteria stated in our code. It does meet the intent of the B three district, it is in compliance with the comprehensive plan, future land use map. We believe it's very compatible with the existing uses in the surrounding area, since it would match the property directly to the north and the current use that's already there. The planning commission did recommend approval of the rezone request, March twenty-fourth meeting. And staff is recommending approval of the rezone request tonight. I'll open that one up for any questions.
Question, council? Alright, now hold a hearing, do they have anyone?
We do not have anyone wishing to make comment.
Alright, I'll close the hearing and I'll consider a motion.
Mister Mayor, I move to approve pass ordinance twenty-five thirty-eight on first reading as presented.
Second.
I have a first and a second, please vote.
That passes unanimously. Item number twenty-one.
Is ordinance twenty-five thirty-nine on first reading. City council consideration of an ordinance twenty-five thirty-nine on first reading. An ordinance of the city council of, city of Montrose, Colorado vacating a right of way along North Second Street with the city of Montrose, within the city of Montrose. Any comments on that, Amy?
For the right of way vacation, right? I have a short presentation for this one as well. Alright, so this property is located at one twenty-seven North Lot Avenue with a request to vacate a portion of the property that's along North Second Street. You guys have seen this one before, we brought this before work session on March fifteenth. This is the area that's proposed to be vacated, it's the area highlighted in blue. And the property in yellow is the one twenty-seven North Lot. And so it would then bring these two properties together so that they can build future housing in this area, so the hope is to build an additional dwelling unit in this area. This is a plot of the survey for the vacation of North Second Street, which would bring this into the same parcel. That would be done administratively. And that's really all I have to share on that one, so if you want more details, I can definitely share more, but I know you guys have already seen this once, so I won't go into too much more.
Alright, thank you, any questions?
Isn't this the one we talked about rather extensively at a work session?
We did.
I think we had a lot of questions, just clarifying rights of way and why our city blocks are the way they are and how much space was set aside for streets and so if anyone thinks this is really interesting and wants to do a little bit of a deep dive, they can go back to that work session.
And also, this is just right, pretty much across the street from Sherrigan's to the southwest. Alright, I'll, no other questions for council, I'll hold a hearing.
Mister Mayor, I don't see any public raising their hand to make comment.
Alright, I'll close the hearing and consider a motion.
Mister Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance twenty-five thirty-nine on first reading as presented.
I have a second?
Second.
Alright, please vote. This is the city council considering, consideration of award and contract an amount of eighty-three thousand two hundred and two dollars and seventy-two cents with the owner's contingency of twelve thousand four eighty Acumen Environmental Services from Adams Bassis Abatement at nine thirty-one North Park Avenue. And Mister Shai is going to cover that for us.
Yeah, thank you Mister Mayor and council. So you said it all Doug already, pretty much, there's asbestos abatement on nine thirty-one North Park Street. We recently purchased this property and it's, the building there is the old Powderhorn Industries building. Familiar with it, it's very old and was very specific for the use that it was used for, but isn't, isn't suited for what that site will be used for in the future. And so the building ultimately needs to be demoed, demoed. And to allow that to happen, we have to abate the asbestos in the building, which is in pretty much everything in that building and very costly in the CMU block. And that's why this is such an expensive abatement. But anyway, nothing else on this has changed since we discussed it at a work session. I'd be happy to go into any of it in more detail. But ultimately, it is a contract in eighty-three thousand dollars, two hundred and two with an owner's contingency on top of that. Abatement is oftentimes hard to find all of the abatement during the assessment. And we've had other ones come back where, as they're doing the abatement, they find other asbestos and there can be additional items added to the contract, so instead of having to come back here and ask for small changes, we would like to include that contingency. So with that, I would take any questions?
Any questions from council?
Yeah, so nobody bid on this from the western slope, it appears.
That's correct.
Is that because they don't have the technology or?
Either, there's only a couple on the western slope and either they are busy or, you know, the, the scale of this project, having to demo the CMU block as part of the abatement, that may not have been in their wheelhouse. I think that adds quite a bit to the project where it's, it's no longer removing just plaster or floor tile. You're removing CMU block, which is much larger, much heavier and turns into more of a demolition project as part of a controlled environment, and so it may not have been in their wheelhouse. I see, thanks.
Could you please explain to the public what CMU block is?
Yeah, concrete masonry unit, it's in a lot of, it's a structural component of a lot of block buildings, we make all of them, but it's like a brick, but a lot bigger, used for structure.
And to be clear, that due to the age of this building, that at the time that the building was constructed, that asbestos was considered a good insulation and binding agent for concrete blocks. So this is not at all unusual, this isn't some like freakish.
No, it's actually very common for buildings built in, you know, between the sixties and eighties. It was a very, very common building product and was used in a lot of things. Many of them, actually I learned recently that they even used it in glazing. I didn't know that until recently, so it's, they used it in a lot of stuff.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a question? I'll accept public comments.
Mister Mayor, I don't see anyone raising their hand.
Alright, then I will consider a motion.
Mister Mayor, I move to award a contract an amount of eighty-three thousand two hundred and two dollars and seventy-two cents with an owner's contingency of twelve thousand four hundred and eighty dollars to Acumen Environmental Services as presented.
I have a second.
Second.
I have a first and a second, please vote. Addendum to the agenda this evening. And shuffle going from senior to junior. I don't know which way that goes.
I don't know, I was supposed to ask if you had any changes to the agenda.
We'll do better next time. Anyway, so we have twenty-two A and it's pavement marking contract approval. Urgency on this one is to get this done before we do not have a contractor to do it.
That's right. Yes, so this was presented at yesterday's work session. And this is for pavement marking contract to Stripe Lot, which is here in Montrose. We've actually worked with Stripe Lot for several years and they do a very good job for us, they know Montrose very well, so it's it's a pleasure to work with them, but, and they were the only bid in this case. But yeah, the reason for accelerated approval process was due to some of the manufacturers that produce the acrylics and things in the pavement marking compound, is they're from Texas and they had some unforeseen weather conditions early this year that's very unusual for that area. And as actually depleted their supply stock and has really broken their supply chain. It's become quite problematic and we found out through the bidding process and from some of the statements we received from those suppliers that, that we need to get in line as soon as possible to make sure we can get our, our center line striping and our crosswalk striped, parking striped, everything like that this year, so. Yeah, with that, I would take any questions?
Any questions? I think one thing to point out is, we have this problem nearly every winter because we sand the streets and traffic and the sand really take their toll on them.
That's right, yeah. Yeah, we're, we're, every year, it's needed every year, especially crosswalks, I think you see it a lot, and those of they fade. And so we have to stay on top of them.
I think I, I mentioned yesterday at the work session, or I asked and you, you explained that this is really, if we can't get this paint, it really becomes a safety hazard to our community.
Yeah, definitely.
It's really important that we move fast and I think it's another a good reason why you're doing this tonight, right after the work session.
Yeah.
I'll accept public comments.
I don't see anyone in the Chinese West straight there yet.
Alright, I will consider a motion.
Mister Mayor, I move that we approve the pavement marking contract approval as presented.
I'll second that.
Alright, I have a first and a second, please vote. Any comments? Stand for confirmation.
I asked Mr. Shai to question yesterday and I think it looks like he's prepared to share that information.
I am, yeah, thank you, this is about our spring cleanup coming. Be at the tail end of our Earth Week celebration this year. And so the dates for our spring cleanup event are April thirtieth and May first. That's a Friday and Saturday, seven AM to seven PM, which is how we've traditionally done it. This event would be very similar to what we've seen in the past off the San Juan bypass. This, this event would be very similar to what we've seen in the past off the San Juan bypass. Um, and we will, um, be accepting items as, as we normally would have in, in every other year. Um, but as a reminder, we will be taking green waste. Um, we take scrap materials, building materials, um, basically anything that maybe need to be cleaned up other than, um, just residential trash. We don't wanna, we don't have, um, you know, food disposal and things like that. We don't wanna have normal, normal items you would put in your trash can every week. We don't wanna see that, but basically anything else you're cleaning up or wanting disposed of, this is the place for it. Um, we do take electronics, uh, without glass, so not TV screens or monitors, but any other electronics, um, unwanted appliances, things like that. Um, if they, if the appliances contain freon, we do charge twenty dollars to, um, evacuate that freon. Um, the items that we don't accept would be, um, hazardous materials, paint, tires, um, and then the electronics with glass.
Thank you. Any questions?
Looking forward to it, again, it's a fun event, so, April thirtieth and May first.
Mayor and council, I just wanted to, um, again, uh, thank everyone here on council and our public for attending our groundbreaking yesterday for the police department. It was an awesome event. And, uh, just a special thanks also to our OBT staff, uh, because they worked very hard behind the scenes to get that, uh, get that going and to include a Facebook Live, uh, session, which, uh, we got a lot of positive comments from our police officers because when they woke up from midnight shift, they were actually able to watch it. And so that was really cool. So, uh, just a reminder for the community, this coming Monday is construction mobilization and then construction fence goes up, uh, this coming Wednesday, uh, to start also site demolition. So, it's going to, uh, it's gonna get pretty busy on the site, so. Thanks again for all of your support and also for the community's support and, uh, with that, I'll.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I believe if you go on the website, uh, we have the picture of the, what the new apartment building will look.
We do, yep, we do, and actually, uh, I think, uh, David Spear is creating a, a two A page that kind of shows the building and, and shows some updates to, uh, the progress, uh, that we're making in a lot of those areas. More to follow. Thank you.
Council, any comments?
Sure, just, uh, one quick one. I just, on behalf of the council, or the youth council, uh, would like to thank, uh, Councilman Anderson for all his help, um, with the youth council. He's, uh, had a lot of input and we greatly appreciate it. And I greatly appreciate it as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys have any programs you're working on that you'd like to speak to?
Um, sure. Uh, we just finished, uh, an outreach project to try and, um, get youth more involved in to youth council and, um, encouraging people to join. And then, um, this, um, April, we will be working, um, uh, on Earth Week.
Thank you, thank you for coming this evening. If there are no other comments, I would take a motion adjourned. Any council comments?
Uh, yes. I'd like to say that, uh, this afternoon at lunch, that, uh, former Mayor Vinem and I had an opportunity to present a proclamation naming today, April sixth, as Montrose Rotary Day, celebrating Montrose Rotary's one-hundredth anniversary in Montrose area. And it was a, a great time, a great party, and we were treated very well by the Rotary Club as always. And it's, uh, an honor to be associated with a group of people that are that dedicated to the public.
Couldn't have said it better myself, that, that Rotary Club has had a tremendous influence on our community for the last hundred years, the club itself and the individuals who make up that club.
Right.
Yeah, just one more time, I wanna say thank you and, uh, it's been a great pleasure working with you all and I'll miss you very much.
David? So, knowing where you're going, do you, do you accept company to?
Sure, we'll have a guest room, anybody who wants to stop in and, uh, and, uh, use the facility and party with me, that'll be just great.
David and I did, uh, participate, well, was there today? They had the chili cook-off for Public Works and I thought that was interesting. They gave out a trophy for first place, trophy for second place, third place. Only thing he got was person in second place has to wash his beer. Not sure how that worked out. In addition to that, we also had, uh, some groundbreaking ceremonies over in, uh, Yura today. Joe, would you like to comment on those?
Sure. Sure. We, um, we were really excited, it's, it's timely with the Colorado Yura project moving forward. Um, we were able to have groundbreaking ceremonies on a flex building project out at the Colorado Outdoors Yura area today. And the flex building project is a, um, large commercial building, a little over thirty thousand square foot commercial building that will have spaces for a variety of outdoor manufacturers or outdoor clothing companies who've already signed tenant contracts, uh, with the owner of the facility and so that, um, they've pulled a building permit for that, at least the foundation side of things. And Shaw Construction, uh, is the team working with them. Shaw's also, uh, the group that's building our police building and so they have a good presence here in Montrose currently and it's nice to see them grab some other jobs while their employees are, are busy on one. They can jump back and forth between jobs and it adds an economy and scale for both projects. And so that one's really exciting, should be coming to fruition hopefully, uh, and possibly to City Council and the Mura in the next month or two. And then, uh, Colorado Yura also showed their location out there, did a walkthrough of their area. And then, uh, we had a meet and greet with just a few people with, uh, some representatives of Wedge Brands, which is the next phase of the Colorado Outdoors project. And that one is the distribution warehouse that we've been talking about in passing for several months, uh, when we have a Yura discussions. And that would be a very large distribution fulfillment center, uh, here in our community. So, we're hoping with those items, as well as the Marriott Hotel, I talked to Jeff Lamont the last few days from Marriott, and they're still on track, according to them, by May to pull a permit and get a Fairfield in, built at the north end of Colorado. Of course, we've had recently presentations by Kirk Suker, the south end of Colorado. Multi-family housing project. I believe we're gonna try to get that on the twentieth of the agenda of the City Council, uh, to move that forward. So, hopefully a year from now, we'll see a lot of buildings and a lot of new employees out in the Colorado Outdoors area. It's been about three years, even though it feels like it's going slow in the world of business development and government partnerships, it's actually on the fast track and we're really proud of the efforts that all of us have put in, council and staff, as well as members of the community.
And I think it's fantastic, particularly as the weather has warmed up, the number of people who are using our river rock areas and the, and the river bottom and Sears Parks. It's just phenomenal to see the volume that we're seeing. I think that's fantastic, we're seeing the same, uh, kind of outpouring on the golf course. People are beginning to enjoy the outdoors and move around. Alright, I would take a motion to, uh,
So moved. A motion to adjourn.
I've got my chance to adjourn. We are adjourned, thank you very much. Thanks, Ray.